Respondent states. The applicant's confusion of territorial jurisdiction and personal jurisdiction is even more evident in its argument. That if the court were to accept that its jurisdiction only relates to matters occurring within the territory of the respondent state, in their view, they say this conception of jurisdiction racione loci could only apply, and I quote from the applicant's reply, could only apply in respect of human rights violations committed in the territory of a state party, sorry, in the territory of a state which is not a party to the protocol or the charter. So they say it could only apply in respect of human rights violations committed in the territory of a state which is not a party to the protocol or the charter, end quote. This is very confusing. Because if the state is not a party to the protocol or the charter, the court would have no personal jurisdiction with respect to that state. So how could this concept only apply in relation to states not party to the protocol or the charter? The two requirements, that one, for personal jurisdiction to exist, the respondent must be a state party to the protocol, and two, for territorial jurisdiction to exist, the conduct must occur in the territory of the respondent state, are very clearly stated in the information that this court presents on its website about deposited the Article thirty four six declaration in cases involving individuals and non-governmental organizations. The case must involve allegations of human rights, and those alleged violations must have taken place in the state concerned after it ratified the protocol. Those alleged violations must have taken place in the state concerned after it ratified the protocol unless alleged violations are ongoing, end quote. Moreover, when the court presents information about the procedure and the conditions relating to filing a case, the court specifies very clearly, and again I quote, territorial jurisdiction requires the alleged violations to have taken place in the state concerned, end quote. None of this could be any clearer. The applicant argues that if the position of Rwanda, our position, that the alleged violations must occur in the territory of the respondent state, if that position were to be accepted, they say this would render the African human rights protection system devoid of all substance and usefulness. But how could this possibly be the case? After all, in every other case before this court, the facts have occurred in the territory of the respondent state. This has not made the African human rights protection system useless as they suggest. Indeed, the system is working. It is the applicant that is trying to upend things by bringing the sort of claim that has never been brought before this court. It is their conception of territorial jurisdiction that would radically change the African human rights system. This is particularly so as the claims of extraterritorial violation are, as in cases like this, they're likely to be brought in matters which implicate peace and security and therefore beyond the court's jurisdiction. We submit that the court should not depart from its established jurisprudence, and the court should hold that this case falls outside the territorial jurisdiction conferred on the court because the facts occurred outside the territory of Rwanda. Mister Vice President, Members of the Court, permit me now to turn to our submissions that the matters brought before the court are outside the material jurisdiction of the court. The claims of the applicant fall outside the court's material jurisdiction in two separate and distinct ways. First, the matters that are included by the DRC within its application were not the subject of a relevant dispute between the parties at the time when the application was filed. So the matters were not the subject of a relevant dispute between the parties at the time the application was filed. Rwanda submits that the DRC brought its claims in a rather hasty and precipitous manner. We submit that the court only has jurisdiction in interstate proceedings where the matter submitted to the court was already in dispute at the time of the filing of the application. The applicant has failed to demonstrate that such a dispute, a dispute on the claims brought to this court, they failed to demonstrate that such a dispute existed between the parties at the time the application was filed. So that's our first argument on material jurisdiction. The second reason why at least some of the matters submitted to the court fall outside the court's material jurisdiction is that these matters do not, as required by the protocol, they do not relate to a relevant human rights instrument ratified by Rwanda. So we submit that some of the matters submitted to the court do not relate to a relevant human rights instrument ratified by Rwanda. The scope of the court's jurisdiction is set out in Article three, paragraph one of the protocol. As with other international courts, the jurisdiction of the court is constrained by what states' parties to the instrument establishing the court have consented to. It is this provision, Article three, paragraph one, that sets out what the states' parties to the protocol have consented to, and it is important for the court to stay within the limits of that consent. It may be useful to remind ourselves of what Article three, paragraph one actually says, not least because at times one gets the impression that the other side have paid little attention to the text of the provision. So with your indulgence, let me read it out. It provides, and I quote, "The jurisdiction of the court shall extend to all cases and disputes submitted to it concerning the interpretation and application of the charter, this protocol, and any other relevant human rights instrument ratified by the states concerned." Mister Vice President, Honorable Members of the Court, let me now address these submissions in detail. Our first submission on lack of material jurisdiction is that the court lacks material jurisdiction to consider matters in the application filed by the DRC because in interstate cases such as this one, the jurisdiction of the court only extends to disputes which existed between those states at the time when the application was filed. I will first show that this requirement of the existence of a dispute is one that applies to the jurisdiction of this court in interstate cases. I will then show that at the time when the DRC filed its application, there was no dispute between the parties with respect to the matters that fall within the application. Now, the requirement of the existence of a dispute at the time of the filing of the application follows first and foremost from the text of Article three, one, which I have just read out. That provision does not only say that the jurisdiction of the court extends to cases submitted to it, but it specifically mentions that the jurisdiction of the court extends to, and I quote, "disputes submitted," disputes submitted to the court. This means what it says. For a dispute to be submitted to the court, it must actually exist at the time when the application is brought. This requirement that there be a dispute between the parties relating to the subject matter of the case and existing at the time of the initiation of the case is consistent with the practice of other international courts and tribunals that deal with interstate proceedings. In fact, the language of Article three of the protocol, when it speaks of submission of disputes to the court, is reminiscent of the language of the jurisdictional provisions of the statutes of other international courts that deal with interstate cases. In particular, Article thirty eight, one of the statute of the International Court of Justice, similarly speaks of the functions of that court, the ICJ. So Article thirty eight, one of the ICJ statute speaks of the functions of that court as being to decide, and I quote, "such disputes as are submitted to it." Such disputes as are submitted to it. The similarity in the language to that in the protocol is obvious. The protocol of this court speaks of, I quote, "disputes submitted to it." The statute of the ICJ speaks of "such disputes as are submitted to it." That similarity is not accidental, and frankly, is not surprising. The drafters of the protocol of this court, of course, were well aware that in Article five, the protocol contemplated that the court would preside over proceedings brought by states against other states' parties to the protocol. They accordingly and certainly took care of adapting the protocol's language to the deference that is typically shown to sovereign states in international legal proceedings. Now, it is also not of great surprise that the requirement of a dispute has not so far been elaborated upon in the jurisprudence of this court. After all, this is the first interstate case that has been filed before this court. And so this court has so far, for that reason, not yet had opportunity to consider what jurisdictional issues arise in the specific and different context of interstate proceedings. If I may say, what is surprising is that the other side suggests that the court should deal with this case just as it had dealt with all the previous cases, though those cases were brought by individuals against states. There are features which are specific to interstate proceedings, reflected in the drafting of that provision, which as we've just seen, borrows from the language of the ICJ statute. And it is important for those features to be considered in these particular proceedings. Now, let us, let us look at the practice of other international tribunals that have in their founding treaties comparable language specifying that the function or the jurisprudence of the court extends to disputes submitted. Let's look at the practice of other tribunals that deal with this language of disputes submitted to the court. The International Court of Justice has held that two things follow from this language of submission of disputes. First, and I quote, the court has said, "The existence of a dispute between the parties is thus a condition of the court's jurisdiction." I quote again, "The existence of a dispute between the parties is thus a condition for the court's jurisdiction." This is in the case between the Marshall Islands and the United Kingdom. And with your indulgence, Mister President, all the citations are in our pleadings, and we will also submit them with the notes of these oral pleadings, the citations to these cases. So that's the first thing, the existence of a dispute is thus a condition of the court's jurisdiction. Or as the president of the ICJ stated in that same case, and I quote, "The existence of a dispute between the parties to a case is not only a condition for the exercise of the court's jurisdiction, but more fundamentally, a condition for the very existence of that jurisdiction," end quote. The second thing that follows from this language, this language of disputes submitted, is that the court will only have jurisdiction over a particular claim where there was a dispute between the states concerned at the time when the application was filed. The ICJ has put it in this way, and I quote, "In principle, the date for determining the existence of a dispute is the date on which the application is submitted to the court." The ICJ has held this in several cases, exactly that same language, and you will find the citations in our pleadings. The court, the ICJ, stated that this condition follows from the language of its statute. Language that we have seen is very similar to the language used in Article three of the protocol of this court. The language in both instruments is of a dispute being submitted. That submission happens when the application is filed. However, the thing that is being submitted, the dispute, it must actually exist at the time. The alternative is a logical impossibility. States cannot submit a dispute that does not exist. Moreover, states cannot use the filing of a case as a way of manufacturing or creating a dispute. The dispute must exist, and then it is submitted. The applicant in this case argues, despite the clear language of Article three, that there is no requirement of the existence of a dispute. It seems to be their wish that the court reads Article three as if those words which speaks of disputes submitted to the court are not present. But the words are there, and the court must give them meaning. It's not entitled to ignore them. The applicants have come up with all manner of arguments to counter this requirement of the existence of a dispute at the time of the filing of the application. They argue that Rwanda's approach is one concerning what they call traditional litigation. And they say that we confuse that kind of litigation with the requirements of human rights litigation. They contend that the procedural requirements of human rights litigation, particularly before this court, are, I quote, "generally flexible." That's what they say. They say that the drafters of the court, sorry, the drafters of the protocol, and I quote their reply, "intended to create a court that is flexible and adaptable in the exercise of its jurisdiction," end quote. And in this regard, they seek to draw a contrast between how states express their consent to the jurisdiction of the ICJ and this court, as they also draw a contrast between the missions of both courts. In their view, the requirement of the existence of a dispute is pure formalism. Furthermore, the applicants place reliance on the provisions of the African Charter relating to and the practice of the African Commission of Human and People's Rights. Sorry, they place reliance on the provisions of the African Charter relating to the practice of the African Commission of Human and People's Rights to suggest that even in interstate cases, there is no requirement of the existence of a dispute. Finally, they say that the term "case," which you find in the protocol, and the term "dispute," which we also find in Article three, one, they say that these words are to be used interchangeably. They suggest no implication should be drawn from the use of one term or the other. Mister Vice President, Honorable Members of the Court, each and every one of these arguments is misconceived, and in some cases, they are incomprehensible. Let me address them one by one. First, the idea that the requirement of the existence of a dispute is not one which finds a place in human rights litigation flies in the face of the application of that same requirement to many, several interstate cases concerning human rights and brought under various human rights treaties. The ICJ considered and restated this requirement of the existence of a dispute in the case concerning the application of the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination between Georgia and the Russian Federation. And in that case, dealing with the Racial Discrimination Convention, the court engaged in a detailed inquiry of whether the two states had been involved in a dispute on that subject matter at the time the case was lodged before it. That's a racial discrimination case. In a case brought under the Convention Against Torture, the ICJ reiterated that jurisdiction hinges upon the existence of a dispute at the time the obligation, their application was filed. This was a case between Belgium and Senegal regarding the obligation to prosecute or extradite. In fact, in that interstate case, undoubtedly, human rights interstate litigation, it also offers an example of the legal consequence attaching to a lack of a dispute at the time of the submission. The ICJ not only examined whether a dispute existed between the parties regarding the torture convention, it also went on to examine whether a dispute extended to breaches of customary international human rights law. The unanimous bench in that case found that there was at the relevant time a dispute relating to the torture convention, and for that reason, found that it had jurisdiction with respect to that dispute. A large majority of judges also held that there was no dispute between those states relating to breaches of obligations under customary international human rights law, and held that the court had no jurisdiction to deal with Belgium's claims in that respect. As the applicant itself has recognized, the ICJ has also applied the requirement on the existence of a dispute in several cases brought under the Genocide Convention. It's done so in three recent cases, all of which are referred to in the applicant's own reply brief. The case between South Africa and Israel concerning the application of the Genocide Convention in the Gaza Strip. The case between Ukraine and Russia concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide. The case between Gambia and Myanmar concerning the application of the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide. All interstate human rights cases, the ICJ applied this requirement that a dispute must exist at the time of submission. Finally, on this point regarding the application to human rights cases, final point here. The DRC is well aware that this requirement of the existence of a dispute also applies in human rights litigation, not merely from all of these other cases, but also from the experience of the DRC itself in prior interstate litigation that it has been involved in relating to human rights. In a case between the same parties as are now before this court, the DRC and Rwanda, the ICJ applied this requirement to a claim that was brought by the DRC in relation to the Convention on the Elimination of Discrimination Against Women, Human Rights Treaty. This is the case concerning armed activities on the territory of the Congo, new application, in which the court found that it lacked jurisdiction, two thousand and six. Mister Vice President, Honorable Members of the Court, we urge the court to dismiss the submission that this requirement of a dispute does not apply in a case such as this. This requirement follows from the terms of Article three of the protocol, which in turn represents the scope of what the parties to the protocol have consented to. They have only consented to the jurisdiction of the court in interstate cases insofar as a dispute, a dispute that actually exists at the time, is submitted to it. The court is bound to respect that consent and thus to respect the jurisdictional limits set out in the protocol. And moreover, there is no reason why the court should depart from the practice of other international courts and tribunals like the ICJ, whose jurisdictional instruments similarly refer to the submission of disputes. The second reason to reject the applicant's arguments as to the existence of a dispute is that it is simply wrong to say that this requirement leads to formalism. As the applicant itself has noted, the ICJ has stated on many occasions, and I quote, "The court's determination of the existence of a dispute is a matter of substance, not form or procedure." is a matter of substance, not form or procedure. There is no formalistic approach to the determination of whether there is a dispute. What is required is an examination of the real state of affairs between the states concerned.” A third reason for rejecting the argument that there is no requirement of a dispute is that the applicant confuses the requirement for submitting a communication to the African Commission on Human Rights, Human and People’s Rights, with the jurisdictional constraints on this court. They insist that a state is able to submit a communication directly to the commission against another state without first bringing the matter to the attention of the state that is complained against. They then say it must then, it must also be possible before this court. The DRC bases this suggestion on what it describes, and I quote from their reply, “It describes as a combined reading of Articles 47, 48, and 49 of the Charter.” However, reliance here on the provisions of the Charter dealing with submissions of communications to the commission is misguided. This court is well aware of the fact that the provisions of the protocol relating to the procedure by which cases are submitted to the court are not the same as the provisions of the Charter relating to the submissions of communications to the commission. As you have previously stated, and I quote, in the case between the African Commission on Human and People’s Rights and Kenya, as you stated, and I quote, “The court is of the view that admissibility and other procedures relating to a complaint before the commission are not necessarily relevant in determining admissibility of an application before this court.” Now, this was said in relation to admissibility, but the court also spoke about other procedures relating to a complaint. And the same thinking applies also to the rules regarding jurisdiction. Simply put, those rules are not exactly the same for the commission as for the court. Otherwise, the protocol and its carefully delineated language would serve no purpose. In any event, the provisions in Articles 47 to 50 that they rely on, though not directed at the court, they show how the drafters of the Charter did have in mind that before African institutions are engaged by states who are of the view that violations have occurred, that there should be an attempt at friendly settlement of the issue with the allegedly wrongdoing state. Now, although a state may submit a communication to the African Commission without first having communicated the matter to the state, the commission is then tasked with seeking a friendly settlement, or what the Charter refers to as an amicable solution. So to compare this careful, amicable process with the unilateral filing of a, of a legal dispute before this court is disingenuous. In all matters submitted to the African Commission, there will first have been a process of identifying the dispute, seeking to understand and resolve it in an, in an amicable way before the commission moves to the merits of the claim. The requirement of the existence of a dispute does no more than provide similar opportunities for the resolution of that dispute prior to the submission to this court. A fourth reason for rejecting the applicant’s arguments that there is no requirement of the existence of a dispute at the time the application is filed is that this argument fails to give effect to the actual words of Article 3.1 of the protocol. That provision specifically refers to the submission of cases and disputes to the court. The applicant suggests that the word “case” and the word “disputes,” as used in Article 3, are interchangeable, and that the court should not, indeed, they say, does not make any distinction between cases brought by individuals and those brought by states. This argument, as meaning the same thing as the word “case” in Article 3.1, is inconsistent with a basic rule of treaty interpretation. This is the principle of effectiveness, the basic rule of international law regarding treaty interpretation. According to this principle of effectiveness, it is not open to the interpreter of a treaty to adopt a meaning which would render the text redundant. Words in a treaty must be given effect to. So when Article 3.1 of the protocol speaks of cases and disputes, the word “dispute” must be given effect to and cannot simply be interpreted out of the text. The argument of the applicant that “case,” the word “case,” and “disputes” are, in this context, interchangeable, does not stand up to scrutiny because Article 3 uses both. It uses both of these words. It cannot be the case that the drafters meant to speak of the same thing twice. If the two terms are interchangeable, then Article 3.1 is to be interpreted as speaking about the submission of cases and cases, or to be interpreted as speaking of the submission of disputes and disputes. Clearly, the inclusion of the word “dispute” is intended to add something different in that provision to the word “case.” For that reason, it cannot be ignored. And we submit that when Article 3.1 speaks of the submission of disputes, that in accordance with the practice of other international tribunals from where this language is borrowed, it specifically covers disputes between states. Mr. Vice President, honourable members of the court, having established that in interstate cases like this one, the court’s jurisdiction only extends to the submission of disputes that were in existence at the time of the filing of the application, let me now turn to the application of that condition in these proceedings. So what does it mean in these proceedings? As was set out by the Permanent Court of International Justice in the famous Mavromatis Palestine Concessions case, and has been repeated on many occasions, a dispute between states, and I quote, “is a disagreement on a point of law or fact, a conflict of legal views or interests.” End quote. We have set out in our written pleadings the key principles that are to be used to identify a relevant dispute between the parties. First, for a dispute to exist, and again, I quote from the Mavromatis case, quote, “it must be shown that the claim of one party is positively opposed by the other.” End quote. It must be shown that the claim of one party is positively opposed by the other.” End quote. This reference to the claim of one party being opposed by the other relates specifically to the claims that are later brought before the court. It is not sufficient to show that the parties have disagreements or differences in relation to other matters for there to have been a relevant dispute. The ICJ has stated, and I quote, “The evidence must show that the parties hold clearly opposing views with respect to the issue brought before the court, with respect to the issue brought before the court.” Second, again, as the ICJ has held, a dispute exists, I quote, “a dispute exists when it is demonstrated on the basis of the evidence that the respondent state was aware or could not have been unaware that its views were positively opposed by the applicant.” So the respondent state must have been aware or could not have been unaware that its views were positively opposed by the applicant. This means that for there to be a dispute, the applicant must have set out its claim clearly. In other words, the applicant must have made claims which allowed the respondent to understand that the applicant was of the view that the respondent is in violation of legal rights which form the basis of the action, the legal action that is now before the court. Third, while evidence of a dispute can be gleaned from statements that are made by state officials, the court must give particular attention to the content of those particular statements. In particular, a statement will only be said to have given rise to a dispute or will only be evidence of a dispute if it refers to the subject matter of a claim, and again, I quote from the ICJ, if it refers to the subject matter of a claim, and I quote, “with sufficient clarity to enable the state against which that claim is made to identify that there is or may be a dispute with regard to the subject matter.” So the statement must refer to the subject matter of the claim with sufficient clarity to enable the state against which the claim is made to identify that there is or may be a dispute with regard to late, an alleged breach by the respondent of the particular obligation or right that is put in issue between the parties in the judicial proceedings. Fourth, the respondent must have had the opportunity to address the particular claim that is made by the applicant. There will only be a dispute where either the claim of a violation of legal right is positively opposed, in other words, it’s rejected by the respondent, or the respondent state fails to reply to the applicant’s claim of legal violation. Now judged against all of these principles, it is manifest that there was no dispute between the parties to this case concerning the claims that properly form the subject matter brought before this court. So there was no dispute between these parties concerning the claims that are now brought before this court. The factual record, even as presented by the applicants, revealed that there was no relevant dispute at the time the DRC filed its application. When we say that there was no relevant dispute, what we mean is that at the time when the application was lodged, there was no dispute between the DRC and Rwanda regarding the human rights matters, the human rights claims that fall within the present application. Now, the applicant has tried to overwhelm the court by submitting a multitude of statements and documents which are wholly irrelevant to the issues that properly form the subject of a human rights claim before the court. It has submitted all manner of allegations of supposed wrongdoing by the respondent in order to persuade the court that there was a dispute at the time it filed the application. But what is required is not a suggestion that the parties might have had any type of difference. It has to be shown that the issues that properly form the subject matter of this claim, this case, those issues were in dispute. It has to be shown that there was a disagreement regarding the alleged human rights violations that this court is able to deal with. Now, the applicant has submitted a number of statements in which it accused the respondent of aggression and of unlawfully using force within its territory. It then suggests that those statements in this regard and their opposition by Rwanda constituted a dispute before the application was filed. But this approach and the documents submitted reveal very clearly that there was no dispute between the parties regarding the subject matter within the jurisdiction of the court, violations or alleged violations of human rights. As the court will have noted, the DRC did not, in those documents that it submitted, those documents predating the filing of the application, in those documents, it did not allege violations of human rights, the alleged aggression, the alleged unlawful use of force. What those documents show is that the DRC’s application is really an attempt to bring matters concerning peace and security before this court. As we will show tomorrow in our presentation on admissibility, this attempt to mischaracterize matters relating to use of force and maintenance of peace and security as within the competence of the court, it permeates the case throughout, and it makes this case inadmissible for several reasons that we will discuss tomorrow. Moreover, as I will show very shortly, claims under the UN Charter, the Charter of the United Nations, under the African Union Constitutive Act fall outside the jurisdiction of this court as they are not human rights instruments as set out in Article 3 of the protocol which defines your jurisdiction. But for now, let us look at the statements that the DRC cites in its reply brief as demonstrating the existence of a dispute between the parties. First, there is the statement of the president of the DRC made in the United Nations General Assembly on the 20th of September 2022. They rely on it in their reply brief. He accused Rwanda of making direct incursions into the territory of the DRC and of engaging in occupation. But he did not make any claims of the violations of human rights, the type of violations that the court, this court, can actually deal with. True, the president of the DRC referred to the United Nations Charter, he referred to the African Union Constitutive Act, but as I will show shortly, these are not human rights instruments within the meaning of Article 3. There is therefore nothing in that statement that would enable the respondent to know that there was a human rights dispute regarding matters that are now brought before this court. Rather, what was being alleged there was an act of aggression, an allegation that beside being thoroughly contested does not fall within the jurisdiction of this honourable court. The DRC further contends that on the 19th of November 2022, that at the 18th summit of the Organisation Internationale de la Francophonie, that its prime minister refused to take a family photo in protest against human rights violations by Rwanda. First, there is no evidence that is given of any particular reasons that were offered at the time by the prime minister for refusing to take the photo. Also, it is hard to see how this act of declining to take a photo could possibly fit within the ICJ’s jurisprudence that a statement only gives rise to a dispute when it is sufficiently clear in referring to a dispute about the specific subject matter brought to the court. Likewise, in the statement of the DRC’s permanent representative to the United Nations made before the UN Security Council on the twenty-ninth of March, 2003, there was no mention made of human rights or of any treaties that this court has jurisdiction to apply. Again, the chief leitmotif of these statements is the allegation that Rwanda has committed aggression. But that is not a human rights claim that is justiciable before this court. That is another matter and that is not the dispute that is submitted to this court. Mister Vice President, you may be relieved to know, honorable members of the court, we don’t have time to go through all the statements that the DRC refers to in its reply. But when you look at them individually and you take them as a whole, a few things emerge. They do not refer to the human rights treaties that are properly within the jurisdiction of the court. They do not even refer to human rights. The DRC has now, in its reply, adopted commentary that liberally asserts violations of human rights, but the statements themselves do not say so. The statements accuse Rwanda of using force, supporting the use of force, undermining the DRC’s territorial integrity, but that is not a human right. Those are not human rights violations. On occasion, these statements make allegations about specific incidents that they allege has led to loss of life. But again, there is nothing that indicates with clarity that these claims are distinct. From the usual allegations of violations of territorial integrity or sovereignty or even an indication that those allegations of loss of life arise from human rights violations. So to conclude, on this first aspect of the jurisdictional objection dealing with material jurisdiction, Rwanda submits that it is a condition of the court’s jurisdiction in interstate cases that a dispute about human rights must have existed at the time when the application was submitted to the court. And in our submission, it is very clear that at the time this application was filed, even if there were some differences between the DRC and Rwanda on other matters, it cannot be shown that there was a dispute relating to the human rights treaties or human rights violations that form the basis of the court’s jurisdiction. Mister Vice President, honorable members of the court, let me now turn to the second argument that we have regarding lack of material jurisdiction. That’s the argument that aspects of this case fall outside of the material jurisdiction of the court because the applicant relies in part on documents that are not human rights instruments ratified by the respondent. With your indulgence, let me again quote from Article III, paragraph one of the Protocol. I quote again, “The jurisdiction of the court extends, shall extend to all cases and disputes submitted to it concerning the interpretation of the Charter, this Protocol, and any other human rights instrument ratified by the states concerned, and any other human rights instrument, any other relevant human rights instrument ratified by the states concerned.” This provision is crystal clear. The court has jurisdiction to entertain claims brought not only under the African Charter and Protocol, but also under other instruments as long as two conditions are met. One, those instruments must be relevant human rights instruments. Two, those instruments must be ratified by the state concerned. Which Rwanda accepts falls within our. Those instruments, the DRC also includes violations of the United Nations Charter, the Constitutive Act of the African Union, the Pact on Security, Stability Development in the Great Lakes Region, the Peace, Security and Cooperation Framework Agreement for the Democratic Republic of Congo and the region. Now, I note that in the application that was originally filed by the DRC, those instruments were referred to, but the DRC did not make it clear that it was alleging a violation of those instruments. However, in its reply brief, the DRC clarifies that it was indeed alleging a violation of these instruments. Rwanda submits that the court does not have jurisdiction to deal with alleged violations of the four instruments I have just mentioned. This is because, one, they are not human rights instruments. In the case of the Great Lakes Pact and in the case of the Peace, Security and Cooperation Framework, they are not instruments ratified by Rwanda or indeed by any other state because they are not treaties. To make a definitive finding that these instruments, these four instruments, for jurisdiction of the court. Also alleged that some of this conduct also violates the African Charter or other human rights treaties. As a general matter, the jurisdiction of the court is defined by the consent that states have given. And the court should and indeed must always be careful to ensure that it is sticking to the competence it has been given. States have only given the court a mandate to deal with violations of human rights instruments that are binding because they have been ratified. No more than that. In this specific matter, the DRC tries to muddy the waters by mixing matters relating to peace and security with human rights claims. This is a human rights court that is tasked with dealing with violations of human rights. The applicant does not hide its intention to draw this court into deciding on matters relating to the use of force. It says very clearly in its reply, and I quote, “There is an inextricable link between human rights and the use of force, peace and security. The use of force by one state, Rwanda, against another state, the DRC, as in the present case between these two states, has a negative impact on human rights in that it generally leads to the violations of these rights.” End quote. In other words, the applicant is suggesting that whenever there are. This court will automatically have jurisdiction to deal with such a case under the guise that this is a matter concerning human rights. Nothing will bring this court into greater disrepute than this sort of argument. And such an attempt to broaden the jurisdiction of the court beyond the mandate that it has been given must be rejected. The other point that is of relevance here is that by insisting that the court has jurisdiction to deal with claims under the UN Charter and the AU Constitutive Act and other peace and security instruments, the DRC seeks to claim that the matters it now brings to the court are the matters that were already in dispute between the parties at the time when it filed its claims. As I showed you, the DRC made reference to a number of statements in which it claimed that Rwanda was using force on its territory, allegedly in violation of the UN Charter and the AU Constitutive Act. In arguing that these are issues within the jurisdiction of the court, the applicant is trying to show that there was some continuity between the issues that were raised in those statements and matters that are now within the jurisdiction of the court. If the court confirms, if the court were to confirm that alleged violations of the UN Charter, the AU Constitutive Act and other instruments relating to peace and security do not fall within the jurisdiction of this court, this would also confirm that there was in fact no dispute between the parties relating to human rights prior to the filing of the application. Let me now turn to the two conditions that I referred to in relation to these instruments. The test for ascertaining whether an instrument is a human rights instrument is fairly simple and it has not been particularly contentious. This court has been very clear as to whether it considers an instrument to be a human rights instrument. You stated in one of your previous cases, “Accion pour la protection des droits d’hommes” against Cote d’Ivoire, you stated, and I quote, “In determining whether a convention is a human rights instrument, it is necessary to refer in particular to the purposes of such convention. Such purposes are reflected either by an express enunciation of the subjective rights of individuals or groups of individuals or by mandatory obligations on state parties for the consequent enjoyment of human rights, of the said rights, sorry. I repeat, such purposes are reflected either by an express enunciation of the subjective rights of individuals or groups of individuals or by mandatory obligations on state parties for the consequent enjoyment of the said rights. The key requirements here are very clear. There has to be an express enunciation of the human rights in question in that instrument or obligations have to be imposed on states with regard to the said rights, the particular rights that are in issue. The DRC makes an issue of the translation of this passage that I have just quoted. And they argue that it has a slightly different meaning in the French translation. The DRC argues that the French version of this judgment shows that the instrument does not need to set out binding obligations. However, in making this argument, it has left out relevant wording that undermines its argument. The relevant paragraph from that judgment does not simply state that the obligations in question are, and permit my very, yeah, my, with your indulgence, I’ll use my very poor French. So the judgment does not really state that the obligations in question are “obligation implicant la jouissance”, “jouissance”, as stated by the applicant. Rather, this judgment referred to “la prescription allegue d’état”. So the stipulation of obligations regarding states that involve the consequent enjoyment of human rights. In short, the instrument must provide for binding obligations with regard to human rights. Now, we do not argue, we do not argue that a treaty is only a human rights instrument if it exclusively deals with human rights. However, we do say that when the court speaks of an express enunciation of subjective rights of the individual, it does require that specific rights are set out in the instrument. Although the UN Charter and the AU Constitutive Act refer to the promotion and the protection of human rights, when listing the aim. of human rights when listing the aims of those organizations, neither instrument actually sets out specific rights. They do not include an express enunciation of such rights, nor do they provide obligations regarding the enjoyment of any particular rights. The applicant suggests in its reply that the court has held that the Constitutive Act of the AU and the UN Charter are human rights instruments because the court has referred to such instruments in its judgment. With regard to the AU Constitutive Act, the applicant refers to the judgment of this court in the Mohamed Abu Bakari versus United Republic of Tanzania case, where it is true that the court did in fact make reference to the Constitutive Act of the AU. However, that case in no way supports the applicant's position. The issue in that case was whether the application was admissible. And what the court was considering was whether the provisions in what is now Article 50, Paragraph 2B of the Rules of the Court on Admissibility had been complied with. One of those conditions in Article 50, 2B, in fact, a condition that Rwanda has invoked in this very case and which my colleague will elaborate on tomorrow, is that the application must be compatible with the Constitutive Act of the AU. In other words, the rules require that the application must not violate the Constitutive Act. Let us be clear what this requirement means. It is the application that must not violate the Constitutive Act. It is not that the court is to examine whether the conduct of the respondent is a human rights violation of the Constitutive Act. In fact, in the Mohamed Abu Bakari case, it had been argued that the application was inadmissible because the applicant had not alleged breaches of human rights in violation of the Constitutive Act. It was in response to that argument that the court explained that the provisions of the rules, which say that the application must not be incompatible with the Constitutive Act, does not render, in that particular case, did not render, an application inadmissible because it did not allege that the conduct of the respondent violates the act. It was in that context that this court stated, and this is what's important, and I quote, it's in that context that this court stated, I quote, "The violations alleged in the application are susceptible to be examined by reference to the Constitutive Act and/or the Charter and are not manifestly outside the scope of application of those instruments." In other words, examinations of the violations of the human rights instruments must not be debarred by some incompatibility with the Constitutive Act. That was the point. So there's nothing in that case that suggests that the Constitutive Act is a human rights Let me now turn to the UN Charter and whether it is correct to say, as the DRC does, that this is a human rights instrument within the meaning of Article III of the Protocol. It's true that members of the UN in Articles 55 and 56 of the Charter pledge to take action in cooperation with the United Nations Organization for the achievement of respecting human rights and fundamental freedoms. However, the Charter does not anywhere specify any particular human rights, meaning that the express enunciation of rights that this court has set is the standard for a human rights instrument is absent. Furthermore, it is hard to say that Article 55 and 56 specify clear obligations with respect to human rights, such as this court would expect from a human rights instrument. In exactly the same provision, members of the UN also pledge to take action to achieve full employment, higher standards of living, solutions of international economic and social problems, but we do not then say that there is a violation of the UN Charter when these lofty goals are not achieved. The applicant in its reply brief suggests that this court has found that the UN Charter is a human rights instrument. They refer to the case of Frank David Omari and Tanzania. However, this is incorrect as the applicant again misunderstands the court's reference to the UN Charter in that judgment. In that case, what the court actually said was, and I quote, "In fact, Article 60 of the African Charter authorizes the court to draw inspiration from international law relating to human and people's rights, in particular from various African human rights instruments, the United Nations Charter, the Constitutive Act of the organization..." Sorry, the Charter of the Organization of African Unity and the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. To understand what the court was saying in that case, it is important to note that Article 60 of the African Charter is actually directed at the Commission. It is the Commission which has a different mandate that is specifically directed to draw inspiration from those materials. Now, this is important because though the court says that it may draw inspiration from those materials, it is clear that the court can only draw inspiration from those materials once it is established that it has jurisdiction. And the court's jurisdiction is only established after it is determined that the application is based on a human right instrument ratified by the state concerned. In fact, it's very clear that in that case, the Omari case, the court was not using those materials to define what is a human rights instrument. Very clear because the court in that case lists the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and then the court clearly says that the Universal Declaration of Human Rights is not one of the human rights instruments that fall within Article III of the Protocol. So all the court was saying is that once jurisdiction is established, it can draw inspiration from international human rights law, for example, to interpret the instruments that are in fact within its jurisdiction. In summary, there is nothing in the court's case law that deviates from the starting point, that in determining whether a particular treaty is a human rights instrument within the jurisdiction of the court, that treaty has to contain an express enunciation of the human rights in question. The Constitutive Act of the AU, the United Nations Charter do not do so, and thus they are not human rights instruments within the meaning of Article III. Mr. Vice President, Honorable Members of the Court, let me now briefly turn to my final point. And this is the second reason why some of the instruments relied on by the applicant fall outside the material jurisdiction of the court. This is the requirement that not only must the instruments be a human rights instrument, it must be one that is ratified by the states concerned. In other words, the court only has jurisdiction to consider violations of treaties that the respondent state has become party to. Only treaties are ratified by states. The drafters of the Protocol chose their words carefully. The purpose of this requirement is only to include within the material jurisdiction of the court allegations of violations of instruments that are explicitly ratified by the respondent. The DRC seeks to found the jurisdiction of this court in part on the Pact on Security, Stability and Development in the Great Lakes Region and on the Peace, Security and Cooperation Framework Agreement for the Democratic Republic of Congo and the region. However, these are not treaties ratified by states and certainly not by Rwanda. Thus, even if they were to be regarded as human rights instruments, the characterization that Rwanda disputes for the reasons I have set out, they fall outside the material scope of the court's jurisdiction. Despite this very clear text, and indeed it could not be clearer, we were very surprised to read in the applicant's reply brief the suggestion that this court's case law says the opposite of what the Protocol provides for. The DRC says that it is not essential for every human rights instrument to have been ratified in order to establish the court's substantive jurisdiction. I'm sure that this will come as a surprise to the court too. To justify its claims that the court has jurisdiction over alleged violations of instruments not ratified by the states concerned, the applicant refers to cases where it says the court has applied the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights, it's not a treaty. It has been referred to by the court, but the court has been clear, crystal clear, that the Universal Declaration is not a human rights instrument that falls within Article III. Reference was made by the applicant to the Frank David Omari case that I've just referred to, Frank David Omari and Tanzania. There, this court ruled in Paragraph 74 of your judgment that reference to the Universal Declaration is permissible, and I quote, "as long as the alleged violation is also provided for by a treaty ratified by the state concerned." This court, end quote, end quote. This court then went on to state in the very next sentence, as if for the avoidance of any doubt, this court then stated, quote, "The court has the power to exercise its jurisdiction over alleged violations in relation to the relevant human rights protection instruments ratified by the respondent." End quote. So not only is the text of Article III of the Protocol very clear, the case law of this court is also clear. For the court to have jurisdiction, the instrument must have been ratified by the respondent. For this reason, we submit that allegations of violations of instruments that are not treaties fall outside the material jurisdiction of the court. Mr. Vice President, Honorable Members of the Court, with your indulgence, let me bring my presentation to an end by repeating Rwanda's submissions, that the application must be dismissed because, one, the case falls outside the territorial jurisdiction of the court, and, two, because the case does not fall within the material jurisdiction of this court. Honorable Members of the Court, this concludes Rwanda's presentation on jurisdiction this morning. I am very grateful to you for your kind attention.
Merci pour les exceptions soulevées. Après nous, nous allons observer une pause d'une heure de temps. Au retour, vous aurez l'état requérant qui va plaire d'un réplique sur les exceptions de compétence.
...to present its objections regarding jurisdiction. Thank you very much.